Are we streaming? We're only streaming, right?
We are now streaming live, yes.
Okay.
Looking to see who's here.
It looks like we're still missing Councilmember Eklund.
I don't see Kim. Is Grant here?
You're also missing Councilmember Olson.
That's what I thought. Is that it?
Looks to be.
Okay. Alright, it's only 7:20 and we'll wait for Kim and then we'll assign the resolutions as soon as she comes on board. She texted me earlier, I think she had a work issue, so she may be trying to do two things at once.
Want to do public safety now?
We can do that.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, Tambo, do you want to do number five?
Yep.
Jeff, do you want to do number six?
Sure.
And I will do number seven.
Okay, so yeah.
Tony, under new business, I don't know if you heard much. We'd had some questions that were asked about resolution number nine, so during that time I might ask when you open things up for discussion to have Jeff give some context for people who may not have remembered our conversation during the work session.
Do you want Jeff to address it now?
Well, I asked him to do it, you know, because I wasn't sure how many people were going to be on the meeting and there've been some questions about what we had talked about, once I was reminded about it, we had talked about it, I just don't know if everybody that'll be watching the meeting, but you can do it now if you want to, it doesn't matter to me. It was just, it was just to put some context behind the, the cost, so.
Something we forgot, this is additional work to the scope, the engineer. The original contract was for design, this is for after the bidding to review the bids. The first part was for review and approval of the bid and the second part is the engineering inspection and reporting. And the main part of this is, is reporting for the federal program, the federal grant. It's quite a tricky process if you've never done it and the state recommended that we let the consultant do it. So we get paid in a timely fashion, reimbursed in a timely fashion. So it's the bottom line, we had questions, I can, it was in your handout, there's a full description of what they're going to be doing for you, or for us. My question is, there was no funding left over in the grant to pay for this? No, if you recall, Brent, the, the actual cost of the meters went up and we had, we had to go back in for 20, Ryan helped me, or 20, something, 20,000 or $22,000 to cover the additional cost of the grant. This is a grant that was 100,000's being paid by the GEBB, 400,000's being paid by the state. We really didn't have any money in the game at all until we put the extra 20,000 in for the meters. This, this money would be paid for by the city, though, however.
Does that answer your question?
Well, he had answered it earlier, but it was just a few of us on and we weren't live, so I was just going to ask when we were voting on it to give some context, but maybe that was good enough since we are live streaming now.
It's up to you if you want to ask him when, you know, bring it up again.
Okay.
Do we have, is Kim here yet? Don't see her.
Not, not yet, President Dulce, I don't see Grant either. I don't see Councilmember Olson.
Alright, the other thing is, the Reverend Blair, is he coming on for the invocation?
That'll be Jen's question, clerk Williams.
He should be, I, I double-checked with Leanne that he was all set, so Eddie, he should be joining the meeting room or the waiting room at some point.
Okay. Well, we still have five minutes, so he's probably gonna come in. Are there any other questions for anybody, we have a few minutes, like, there's any other questions on?
Sidewalk plowing, Tony, you and I talked about it yesterday.
Yep.
Right now, we, we tried to put a sidewalk plow out this afternoon, ran for an hour and broke down. And right now, we have three broken-down sidewalk plows. They're all very ancient, 1979, I think they're, the youngest one is 20 years old, the oldest one is, what, 40 years old? And as you know, it's something we do after we get done plowing, so today, this morning, we were plowing the back half of the storm. And then we put, like I said, we put somebody out this afternoon, but equipment malfunction, hoping to get those fixed tomorrow and try to get them back out.
But I was just gonna ask you, are those serious problems or problems that can be fixed?
Yes.
Yes.
Serious problems, and we are going to attempt to fix them, but again, they're, they're bad shape.
I know. Well, just a point of clarification, 1979 is not ancient, I graduated from high school in 1979?
Right there.
That is ancient.
I'll see you out.
I actually, Jeff, I have a question as well, who plows North Main Street?
We do.
You do? Okay, about 9:45, whoever was plowing came through so fast that it threw snow onto our windows halfway up the
AM?
Pardon me?
9:45 AM?
Yep, I was, good thing I wasn't walking between the two buildings.
I can, I can.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and I know they, they tried, but this was, this was crazy, the spray from the road hit both buildings halfway up the, halfway up the wall. And if anybody had been walking through there, they would have been plastered with debris. And there were a couple chunks of pretty good-sized balls of hard ice, if they had hit our window, they probably would have broken at least the outer plate glass window, so.
I'll mention to the driver.
I appreciate it.
Okay.
And I, you know, and I, we've been around this issue quite a while and I know that, you know, every year the enforcement of, of people shoveling or clearing their own walks is, is always been, is always been a big question mark. And the city's ability, you know, doing the best we, equipment we have, the manpower we have, the time we have, to clear as many of the sidewalks starting with the brownout words, rules and, and as many of the sidewalks as we can, so. Now, this is, you know, something that you and I have talked about and mentioned that, you know, is there, is there a better way to do it, or is there, you know, maybe it's some time to look at, you know, different policy or budgeting, something to add another plow or two, if, if we can, if we reasonably can do it or financially can do it, so. Comes up every year and I know it's a major problem for people and, you know, it's not an easy, not an easy fix to the problem, so.
I'm just, President. I'd like to thank Jeff, I had issue of, and he jumped right on it with the, with the plows, so I just want to thank him for that. And my constituents were very happy when you moved back down the street, so thank you.
I think we're all here.
Yep, sorry, connection issues.
I know, the gang's all here, I'd see. Okay, we already did the resolutions for public safety, so Ken, if you want to assign finance ones, there's four.
Sure, Marie, you want to do one and two?
Sure.
We'll do three and four.
Okay, let me just get that in here.
We have new, new business.
Right, under new business, there's eight, nine, I believe all of them are finance, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Well, I'm going to be recusing from 11.
Correct.
So I can do the first two and Marie, you can do the last two.
Hang on, because I don't know if I've got 11 and I got the amended, let me make sure.
11 came this afternoon.
I know.
It's the fire department contract, if not, I can send it to you.
Give me a minute, because I ran off the I ran it off and the copy that was mailed isn't in here and I know, but I ran it away, my hair does, no, I don't have it in either copy that I printed. I printed one off at work and I printed one off. No, I don't have it, so somehow even with, I had to leave work at 3:30, so if it came after that, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it came at 4:40.
No, I did not get it because I was at a BPU meeting and I don't have number 11.
Kim, can you email that or text it to her, email it to her?
Yeah, but you're gonna have to send it to Karuba Maria at Gmail, because I'm not.
Do, do you want, do you want it on a text message screenshot, so you just have?
Whatever you want me to do, I just can't, I don't have it because I wasn't at work.
Yeah, it was sent out this afternoon about 3:45.
I did not get it, because I said I printed out the agenda and then I got the one in the mail about I guess about four o'clock home, I don't depend on the mail for that one.
President Dulce, should we go into executive session, discuss resolution number 11? If I was.
I mean. Yep, am I back, am I here?
I'm back.
Okay, yeah, I'm gonna have fun tonight with this. Um. Yeah, I guess if you'd like to have an executive session, you want to do it now?
Yes.
Okay.
Will we go into the executive session, discuss a contract matter?
Do you like to make a motion to go in executive session for contract negotiation?
Don't move. Second.
Second by Councilwoman Eklund, second by Councilwoman Karuba, all in favor?
I.
I.
Post. Okay, we'll go in executive session for a brief moment.
Just give me a second to pause the recording.
Alright, the live stream has started back up. Thank you, I guess we'll call this, this meeting of the February 22nd council voting session to order, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yeah.
James?
Here.
Karuba?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Eklund?
Here.
Graham Reinhart?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
And President Dulce.
Here, thank you. At this time, we'll have invocation, is the Reverend Blair here, did you see him?
I'm not sure, Mayor, is he in the waiting room?
He is not, no.
Okay. On short notice, can Councilwoman James, can you give us an invocation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, so if everybody wants to stand, then.
You need the flag?
Here, put the flag up.
Chief has one.
To the Republic?
Republic.
Father God, we just thank you for another day, Father. Father, we just ask that you just continue to bless our city, Father. Father, we just ask that you just protect our DPW people, Father, as they are out on this climate weather, Father, and climate weather. Father, we ask that you give a special protection to our peace and our fire, Father, as they go out every day, Father, with their lives for us. Father God, we just ask as we go through this business of the city, that you will show wisdom for us in patience, Father. Father, we just also ask that our constituents, Father, we just ask for wisdom and patience for them too, as we are doing our best that we can. We are trying to be our due diligence of the city's word. Father, we just ask that you just bless each and every household that is watching us, Father. Father, we just ask that you just, just continue to lead and guide us, we ask all this and this, some be the same, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. At this point, do I have approval of the minutes of the January 25th voting session?
Don't move.
So moved by Councilwoman Eklund, no vote required on that, now do we have any?
From the mayor, we have two appointments. Council members, in pursuance of the authority vested in me by the charter of said city, I do hereby nominate Robert Kenyon, 37 Hazeltine Avenue, Jamestown, New York, 14701, to be reappointed a member of the zoning board of appeals in and for the city of Jamestown, New York. Peter Shira, 209 Pine Street, Jamestown, New York, 14701, as an at-large member of the Jamestown Local Development Corporation in and for the city of Jamestown, New York.
Thank you, do we have a motion to suspend the rules involved on the appointments?
So move Councilwoman Karuba.
Moved by Councilwoman Karuba, do I have a second?
Second, Councilwoman James.
Will the clerk please pull the clerk please call it all on the suspended rule?
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, do we have a motion to approve the appointments?
Don't move.
So move.
Moved by everybody, so moved by Councilwoman Eklund, I believe, seconded by James. Councilwoman Graham Reinhart, now the clerk, please pull the council on the appointment.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson? Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, appointments are passed, at this point, were there, are there any presentations or petitions or any communications from the public?
I have one email to read into the record, and this comes from Paul Berger at Two Kip Street Lower here in Jamestown regarding Proposition EFN and forced families' needs. The proposition, Proposition EFN, is for the purposes of petitioning Chautauqua County of the State of New York and its court systems to enforce the needs of families' mental hygiene, health, by enforcing visitation and custody orders with the use of police officers and criminal charges. The use of criminal charges for contempt of court, criminal contempt in the second degree, NYPL Section 215.50 is a Class A misdemeanor punishable by up to one year in jail. Criminal contempt in the first degree, NYPL Section 215.51, is a Class E felony punishable by up to four years in prison if convicted. The proposition or petition EFN is for the equal and lawful purpose and use of male and female parents alike and shall not be discriminated against based on any biases or court system in the entirety of the state of New York or face penalty by the state of New York penal law. Parents that choose to ignore their parental rights to being a fundamental and integral role in the child's life shall be exempt from prosecution due to lack of interest, blatant disregard for their visitation with their children, and failure, failure to exercise their right to parent, which is a fundamental right, 14th Amendment to the United States Constitution. Father and mother, each father and mother has a constitutional right to be an active and integral part of his or her children's lives if he or she so chooses. Parents trying to exercise this protected right should be protected to be allowed to justly do so through petitioning the Unified Family Court System of the State of New York. Proper and lawful and integral channels, such as the Unified Family Court System of the State of New York, should have to be mandated to enforce visitation slash custody orders for parents exercising their protected right to parent and police action and charges filed against parents neglecting to follow this, which should be mandated to be charges of contempt of court. Criminal contempt in the second degree, NYPL Section 215.50, is a Class A misdemeanor punishable by up to one year in jail. Criminal contempt in the first degree, NYPL Section 215.51, is a Class E felony punishable by up to four years in prison if convicted for blatant disregard to follow the court-ordered visitation and custody and fully enforced to the full extent of the law. A US professor, Sarah McLanahan, professor of sociology at Princeton, has had an ongoing study since the year 2000 investigating into the development of adolescents and states, quote, "Data began to show the impact of instability on a child's life," end quote, "from children who had experienced divorce of their parents and where parents did not cohabitate were more likely to fail to progress at school and twice more likely not to graduate from high school." "Having two adults who cooperate to raise the child who give time and money means there are just more resources than one doing it," she said. "5,000 children were used in the study and tracked from the year 2000 to current day." Millennium Cohort Study researched in the UK, United Kingdom, used 19,000 children and found on both the basic educational skills and the outcomes, children and single parents appear to be, appear to be worse. The study stated, quote, "We measure their well-being levels of depressive symptoms, of how they're feeling, their levels of anxiety and so on, and we tend to see they're also doing worse." Also on that dimension, said the lead researcher, Professor Emma Fitzsimmons from the Institute of Education, source BBC News, and there's a website listed as well. "This petition is to protect parents who want to be in their children's lives. It's to make New York, New York's Unified Family Court System finally make Chautauqua County fully enforce, allowing parents to be the fundamental part of their child's lives, as is a protected right under the US Constitution, 14th Amendment." That's it.
Thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment that, while I appreciate the communication, this is not really anything the city does, this is the courts and the county, so I don't feel that we should be, you have a need to address any of his concerns directly.
Jen, can you forward me another copy of that email? I do have a connection with a family court judge.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that it for the communications?
Oh, that was it, yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to reports from our standing committees. And we'll start with our finance committee, and the first two resolutions will be read by Councilwoman Karuba.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing payment of the regular audit.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Eric Ryan Corporation for telecommunication audit services for the period of March 1st, 2021, to February 28th, 2022, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form.
Thank you, any questions or comments?
Just to note, there's no charge for this service, if they find savings in our cell phones and other telecommunications services, that they will take a percentage of the savings that they're able to find, but there are no costs upfront for the service.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? If not, clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, thank you, the next two resolutions will be sponsored by the Chairwoman of the Finance Committee, Councilwoman Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution suspending the hiring freeze and authorizing the filling of four full-time firefighters in the Jamestown Fire Department. Funding was included in the 2021 fund budget and also note that these are retirements.
Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution suspending the hiring freeze and authorizing the filling of one full-time police officer in the Jamestown Police Department. Funding was included and is included in the 2021 general fund due to a retirement.
Right, okay, got that in. Any other questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon? James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, that concludes our resolutions from finance, we'll move, we'll now move on to public safety and Councilwoman Graham Reinhart will read the first resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution appointing James T. Walton to the Office of Commissioner of Deeds for a term of two years.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, our next resolution will be sponsored by Councilman Russell.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution authorizing the Board of Public Utilities to install one 150-watt LED equivalent fixture, poll number BPU 33235 on Potter's Alley, and this is, was requested by several of the businesses on Main Street. This is the backside of their businesses and they've made some complaints that they've had some, some drug activity and drug paraphernalia found behind their businesses and their employees use the back doors of those businesses on a regular basis and their employees were not feeling safe due to the unlit conditions.
Thank you. Other questions? Clerk, please pull the council.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye, I'm sorry.
That's great, Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, and the final resolution from public safety will be sponsored by the Chair of Public Safety, Councilman Sheldon.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have a resolution revising and updating the City of Jamestown Management Employee Guidelines effective retroactively to January 1st, 2021.
Thank you, any questions or comments?
Um, I thought we were going to make a motion to table this?
Can I, I, I thought so too.
Oh, in this case, I'd like to make a motion to table this. Reason being, we just, we got it given to us and it really wasn't fully discussed in a work session because we got inundated with other priorities. And I think as a group, we should probably discuss that before we vote on it.
So I would, I would second that.
So you have a motion to table by Councilwoman Eklund and a second by Councilwoman Nelson? With the clerk, please pull the council on tabling.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
It won't even go on.
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eklund?
Aye.
Graham Reinhart?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, well, resolution number seven will be tabled for further discussion. That will conclude our items from public safety. We have any reports from special committees? Any reports from city officers? Report from council members on administrative boards?
Yes, President Dulce, I just wanted to let you know and thank Dan Stone, he's been in conversation with the Fenton History Museum since the oaks, the oak trees were torn down, or torn down, excuse me, the oak were cut down. They are in discussion over how they can memorialize that at the Fenton, some of it's talking about making it educational, taking one slice of a tree and showing how the rings are counted and displaying that, there's also been discussion of some kind of tables or something to put up in the park by the Fenton History Museum, so they've had a lot of good ideas proposed. Dan Stone came and spoke at the last board meeting and thought a lot of good ideas came forward, but he is in discussion with the Fenton right now to determine what they will do. But I just thought I'd let you know that there, there are ongoing discussions of how to memorialize the trees that were displayed and maybe have photographs and other things, both inside and out. So it's a big project. So it's a big project ahead, but a lot of good ideas came forward.
I know there's been a lot of discussion from constituents about things that can be done. One idea that did come up that I was going to bring up later at some point was possibility of a historical marker on Third Street. You know, signifying that, you know, those oaks once stood here, maybe with a picture or some sort of, you know, something right on Third Street, so we can have further discussion on that as we get into the spring and summer. Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I'm finding that I, I've had a couple calls from constituents. Excuse me, I had, I had teeth pulled, so I got a little this. But I was just wondering if Councilwoman Graham Reinhardt could, or Councilman Sheldon could give a kind of like a Reader's Digest update of what's going on with the police reform report. Having people kind of asking me what's going on with that, so it's, if Councilwoman Graham Reinhardt would not mind doing that, you know, like I said, Reader's Digest version is to kind of let people know where we are with that.
Um, I can tell you that we have completed our stakeholder conversations and we are people outline, we've created a timeline to, between the time the stakeholder conversations were completed and the deadline date of April 1st. We have been working as a Public Safety Committee and with some help of, some input from some of the stakeholders to create a draft document that we hope will be out this week for public comment and, and, you know, information or things that they would like to see added or things they would like to see, you know, changed. We haven't really specified in how that will happen. I think I might request that some sort of email, general email be placed in that document where people can, can send all the information to the same place rather than going to different committee members. And so that's a, that's a period that will be open for about two weeks. And so as, as comments come in, we will certainly try to make those revisions almost kind of like simultaneously live while we're hearing comments from people to the extent possible. With a, with the end of the two-week period and comments that are made and adjustments that are made, then it will go to, a draft of it will go to City Council for their review and input and feedback. Uh, and then after that, it goes to vote. Um, I don't have the timeline in the back of my, in front of me right now. It goes, we'll go to a vote to the council like the last week of March. Uh, and again, it'll be checked for, you know, for, for, for voice and for flow and for typos and such before we submit it to the state.
Or, thank you. I mean, again, Rob. Thank you.
Now, the date is March 29th, when we have our March voting session, where we will be voting on please perform and reinvention. So we definitely are looking for public input once we do release this draft.
Okay. That it for administrative boards upstate on any unfinished business? If not, we have a few resolutions, so the next two items under new business, the two, first two resolutions will be sponsored by Councilwoman Eckland.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the sum of thirty-six thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents to be paid to Bergman Associates to cover the unexpected cost of, for construction inspection regarding the Smart Tourism Transportation Project, subject to the approval as of Corporation Counsel as to form.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? If not, the clerk, please pull the counsel.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eckland?
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, thank you.
Okay, we, the next resolution is a resolution authorizing the city comptroller to make the following amendment to the 2020 general fund budget for the purpose of funding the construction inspection and support for the Smart Tourism Project as follows. Increase capital outlay, eight-point-nine-five-five-one-point-zero-five-zero-zero appropriations, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Decrease contingency, eight-point-one-nine-nine-zero-point-zero-four-zero-zero appropriations of thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
If I could just, he did it at the beginning when we were planning, but Jeff, if you could, for people who came on late and who've been asking about this, if they read the agenda to explain that in good, in about a minute or less or something.
Um, this, this is a change order to the original design contract where we increase the scope for work after the design. The contractor or the contractor, the consultant is going to review the bids, make a recommendation to the city as to who the award should go to and to the state, since it's a federal, it's working under the federal program. And then it's also engineering services and construction monitoring and reporting, which is something that the state actually recommended that we go with a consultant because it's a very detailed process, something that we're not typically, we haven't typically done in the past.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments about the resolution? If not, now the clerk, please pull the counsel.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eckland?
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye, thank you. And the final two resolutions under new business will be sponsored by Councilwoman Karuba.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor and Jeffrey Lehman, P.E., Director of Public Works and Acting Director of Parks Recreation and Conservation to purchase one new 2021 John Deere XUV-835M green slash yellow four-by-four gator in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand, sixty-two dollars and thirty-eight cents, subject to approval of the Corporation Counsel as to form.
Thank you. Any comments? Clerk, please pull the counsel.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eckland?
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a personnel agreement with the Jamestown Professional Firefighters Association Local 137 for the period covering January 1st, 2016 through December 31st, 2017.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I would like to ask for permission to recuse on the reasoning that my husband is a retired member of the Jamestown Fire Department Local 137.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll on the recusal of Councilwoman Eckland?
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Eckland?
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. So Councilwoman Eckland will be recused from voting on the contract. Is there any other questions or comments? And at this time, can I yield time to the mayor? He did want to discuss some specific details of the contract, so where is yours?
Thank you, President Dulce and members of the City Council. I'm pleased tonight to present to you a tentative agreement for your vote resolving the contract dispute with our professional firefighters for the years 2016 and 2017. As you all know, it is not easy trying to negotiate at this point almost six years of potential wages. And we've been working diligently, both our management staff through the Comptroller's Office, through our Corporation Counsel, and with our fire management through the Deputy Fire Chief to try to resolve as many years as possible from the union contract. I am delighted to announce that we have come to an agreement in regards to at least a small portion of that, those, those un-yet-decided years, 2016 and 2017, and are presenting it to you all now for a vote. At this time, just to give a brief snapshot of the agreement, we have agreed to fund the 2016 and 2017 contract years at a 2% raise for each year. In addition, we will increase the healthcare premiums after that 2017 by 2% as well. This agreement also covers some additional administrative functions, which includes EMT certification and makes other tentative agreements, which are administrative in nature, now permanent, things that are currently actually being operated under from prior administrations that they have agreed on. At this time, it is my understanding that the fire union has voted on this proposal, has voted this proposal up, and we are now presenting it to the City Council for a final vote. Thank you, President Dulce.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
I just had a quick question, Mr. President, for, for the mayor. You stated that the insurance from 17% to 19%, just to clarify, that'll cover years 2016 and 2017 and also going forward, is that correct?
Uh, that does not cover 16 and 17. That would go up to 19% starting in 18.
So is this, is this insurance retroactive?
Uh, insurance would be retroactive for the years 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Okay, but not retroactive back to 16 or 17?
16 and 17 insurance stays the same.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ryan, could you quickly just tell the citizens what this amount is going to cost us?
Yeah, so the total retro pay will be about nine-hundred and seventeen thousand dollars all in, including salaries, retirement, social security, as well as taking into account the health insurance retroactivity that we would receive.
Thank you.
And also, just to clarify that for the public, as you've told us that those funds are available to cover this contract, that's correct?
Yes, that is correct. We have an accrued liability on the books to cover the retroactive payment, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? If not, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sheldon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Karuba?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Graham Reinhardt?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And President Dulce?
Aye. Resolution is passed. Is there any other new business to come before the council this evening? Okay? If not, just one other, one other thing before we adjourn. I know, Ryan, you put out a, a question about times for meetings. Uh, I didn't see too many responses to that. Um, I'm assuming we're staying on Zoom at least for the time being. And, you know, I, I don't know if there's anybody who's, has a strong, you know, push or move to, to move the time. My suggestion would be a seven o'clock start for the work sessions like we normally would, because normally we would have specific committee meetings. That would get us going about a half an hour earlier, but I would, I would say stay with the 7:30 voting sessions because that's what we've normally done. Just up there, do you want to go to a, a seven o'clock work session? They generally take a little bit longer, especially because we are not doing the specific committee meeting just yet, but that gives us that extra half an hour to cover those committee meetings in our, in our work session. Does anybody have a strong?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Is that good?
Uh, it sounds good.
Yeah, I'm fine.
For, again, just the schedule for March, since we do have five Mondays in March. We do not meet next Monday is March 1st. So our first work session in March will be March 8th. And I believe we're off the 15th, and then we meet the 22nd, and then our voting session is the 29th. So for March 8 and 22, we would have a seven o'clock start, and then we can stay with the 7:30. Generally, voting sessions are a little bit quicker and it's typically the, you know, normally we have been coming on early, like 7:15 to do the house cleaning, you know, do the agendas, assign the resolutions, ask any questions, whatever. If people can click on a little bit earlier for the 7:30 meeting and then, but the seven o'clock work session makes more sense. Gets us through that, that more reasonable hour, so we'll do that. Thank you. Uh, is there any other business to come before the council? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Eckland, seconded by Councilwoman James. Okay, we are adjourned and have a good night.
Thanks.
Good night.